Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The North Ridgeville City Council meeting is now in session. Today is Monday, October 6, 2025. Please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Father, we thank you for the wonderful community in which we live and for the opportunity to represent it as our city council. We ask you to give us and all local, state, national, and world leaders wisdom to make good decisions and to govern with integrity and justice. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Avens?
Here.
Winkle?
Here.
Awig?
Here.
DeVries?
Here.
Jacobs?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Law Director?
Here.
City Engineer?
Here.
Finance Director?
Here.
Clerk of Council? Here.
All right, tonight up first, we have the committee, the whole meeting minutes dated September 10, 2025. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We also have the regular city council meeting minutes dated September 15, 2025. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Again, hearing none, the minutes stand approved as originally submitted. Please note that council has also received the Park and Recreation Commission meeting minutes dated August 27, 2025, the Safety Committee meeting minutes dated September 15, 2025, the Civil Service Commission meeting minutes dated September 22, 2025, as well as the Board of Zoning and Building Appeals meeting minutes dated September 25, 2025. That'll bring us to our lobby session. The lobby session is the portion of our meeting in which the public is allowed an opportunity to address city council as well as the city administration. We do ask that anybody wishing to speak, speak from the podium and from the podium only, please. I will ask you to begin by stating your name and address for the record, at which time you will be allowed up to three minutes to speak regarding matters pertaining to the business of city council or the general affairs of the city of North Ridgeville. Also, in the interest of time, the lobby session is not intended to be an interactive question and answer session, but nonetheless, we do welcome and appreciate your feedback depending on the nature of your comments. A council member or member of the administration may contact you back. So at this time, the lobby session is now open. Do we have anybody in attendance this evening who wishes to address council or the city administration? Again, if you could please state your name and address for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
Jerry Thompson, 33789 Mills Road, North Ridgeville.
Okay.
I've lived there for 48 years, and I want to know when something's going to be done about the roundabout down there. It's got to the point where it takes me and my wife 10 minutes to get out of our driveway. It's really getting bad, and it's become a drag strip down there on Mills Road. That's all I get.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do we have anybody else in attendance this evening who wishes to address council? Okay, seeing none, the lobby session is now closed. We'll move on to administrators' reports. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our Public Works Street Division finished up Chestnut Ridge Road on the east end last week. They'll move, moving over to Birch Street tomorrow, Tuesday, October 7. They'll mill the roadway and then chip and seal on Wednesday with paving to follow. North Ridgeville Heart and Soul kicked off indoor walking at LCCC's Ridge Campus. They are meeting there on Mondays and Wednesdays from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and on Fridays, 8:30 to 10:30 a.m. It's free and open to the community. The annual Fall Fest will happen on Saturday, October 11. It's a free family fun event, and there'll be games, face painting, balloon twisters, bounce houses, wagon rides, music, food, and more. That will be happening over at South Central Park from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Saturday, the 11th. The Chamber of Commerce is hosting a Meet the Candidates night on October 13. That event is happening at the North Ridgeville Academic Cafet- Cafetorium, and that is on Monday, October 13, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There'll be council candidates and school board council, or candidates as well. Coffee and Conversation will happen on Friday, October 17, at 8:30 here in council chambers, and the special guest this month will be April Wilkerson, our Finance Director. On October 18, over at Lake Erie Crusher Stadium, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., it's First Responders and Community Trunk or Treat happening over there in Avon. Some more information on our website. And as you're all aware, the proposed income tax levy, issue eight, is on the ballot in November 4. The city's asking voters to approve a .75% income tax increase to add to the current income tax rate of 1%. That would make the total 1.75, and the proposal would also raise the income tax credit for those working outside the city from .1% to a full 1%. You can find an income tax calculator on the website. You can plug in your numbers and find out how this will impact you specifically. The new revenue would primarily support public safety, but would also help maintain other city operations. For more information, go on our city's website, nridgsville.org/incometaxlevy for more information. There will be a town hall meeting on Tuesday, October 28, at 6:30 p.m. about this very issue. You can hear the income tax proposal and answer, we'll answer some questions that have, there's a link to some questions that you could submit in advance that's floating around the community. That event is going to be held at the academic center in the community room, which is upstairs. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm here representing Christine, who's not here today. Engineering does not have any updates at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Finance?
Thank you, Council President. Before council tonight is ordinance number 2020, excuse me, 2025-138, an ordinance amending annual appropriations. In advance of this meeting, I provided council a memorandum detailing the appropriation amendment for you tonight. This amendment includes items such as repairs to one of our fire engines, additional electric costs for street lighting, the payment of compensatory and overtime, additional funding for full-depth concrete replacement, refunds for sidewalk deposits, and the purchase of three trees for the Memorial Tree Program. Also on the agenda tonight is ordinance 2025-139. Last year, council approved the issuance of bond anticipation notes to support the water meter replacement project. These notes mature in December of 2025. During 2025's annual appropriation, council approved debt service payments of $1 million to pay down the note principal, with the balance remaining of $4 million to be reissued as bond anticipation notes. The legislation before council tonight allows for this note sale. The legislation does not require adoption tonight. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please note that council has also received the July 2025 Fire Department Report, the August 2025 Parks and Recreation Division Report, the August 2025 Police Department Report, and the August 2025 Fire Department Report. That brings us to new business, and under new business tonight, we have a transfer liquor permit request. Clerk, if you could please read the request.
A request to transfer liquor permit from BP North Ridgeville LLC, North Ridgeville, to Danup LTD at 32700 Center Ridge Road.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Winkle?
I'd like to move to not request our own hearing, so this permit can be sent to the state for its final disposition hearing by October 11.
I'll second it.
The motion was made by Winkle and seconded by Awig to not request a hearing, so that this request can be set, sent to the state for final disposition by the deadline of October 11. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries, and that brings us to recess.
Mr. President, move to dispense with recess.
Second.
Motion was made by Winkle and seconded by Awig to dispense with recess this evening. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. All right, we will just move on to first readings, and up first, we have ordinance 2025-130.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute agreements with the Federal Railroad Administration and the Ohio Rail Development Commission for the Race Road Grade Separation Project.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Move to dispense with the second and third readings. Second.
Motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-130. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President, as you're aware, this is a project that won't get started for quite some time, but there are multiple interim steps that we have to meet deadlines on as we go forward in this project. That is the reason why I will ask for this to be adopted with the emergency clause tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any additional comments or questions? Again, the motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-130. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause for the reasons I just recently stated.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to add the emergency clause to 2025-130 for the reasons stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to adopt 2025-130 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Avens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-130 has been adopted.
2025-131.
An ordinance accepting up to 200 hours of sick time when an employee transfers from one public employer to the city of North Ridgeville, Ohio.
2025-132.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 2025-63 in order to increase the not-to-exceed contract amount for the 2025 Full Depth Concrete Pavement Replacement Project to $1,120,000. $120,000.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Move to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-132. Are there any comments or questions?
Yeah, Mr. President, we're in the middle of this project, as you're aware. It's supposed to be wrapping up by the end of this month, and there has been some additional work that needed to be done as a result of some of the work that has been completed previously. So we're looking to increase this contract amount, which was limited by the previous ordinance, and now increasing it to meet the needs of the project at this point in time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any additional comments or questions?
Through the chair?
Mr. Schaefer?
Is this in due to the contractor making a mistake, or are we having them do additional work?
I had mentioned that there is additional work that was needed to be done as a result of some of the work that they had previously completed that was outside the scope of the original contract. So we're increasing the amount to take care of that additional work.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. The motion again was made by the mayor and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-132. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause as this work is being, is underway at the current moment and is due to be completed by the end of the month, and we'd like the contractor to finish all the work that is needed before they are complete, or before they're finished, before the snow flies.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to 2025-132 for the reasons just stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to adopt 2025-132 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Avens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-132 has been adopted.
2025-133.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to purchase two influence screening units from Ortech Incorporated according to law and in a manner prescribed by law.
2025-134.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and enter into a contract according to law and in a manner prescribed by law with the lowest and best bidder for the installation of two new influence screening systems at the French Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant.
2025-135.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to contract for the lauder covers, purchase, and installation according to law and in a manner prescribed by law, and to authorize the installation of an alternative bid three as part of the replacement and upgrade of the complete mix tank aeration and mixing systems at the French Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant.
2025-136.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 5679-2019 with authorize the inclusion of a non-written assessment for the positions of police chief and police captain.
2025-137.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 5681-2019 which authorize the inclusion of a non-written assessment for the positions of fire chief and assistant fire chief.
2025-138.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 2024-139 of the city of North Ridgeville, Ohio, providing appropriations for the period commencing January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2025.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Winkle?
I'd like to move to amend and by substitution, 2025-138 with the version that's in front of us and it was emailed to us prior to the meeting.
Second.
The motion was made by Winkle and seconded by Awig to amend by substitution, 2025-138 with the version that is available at our seats this evening. Is there any discussion?
Through the chair.
Director of Finance?
The revision includes the three trees for the Memorial Tree Program. The number that changed is under the custodial funds. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying. Are there any additional comments or questions? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Avens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2028-1, 2025-138 has been amended.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Winkle?
Move to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
It was moved by Winkle and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-138 amended. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, with the comments by the Director of Finance to give the finance department the resources to pay its bills in an efficient manner, I'll be asking for this with the emergency clause as well. Just an explanation beforehand. Thank you.
Okay. And also, by way of clarification, I believe these appropriations include compensatory time payout and holiday pay for police and fire staff, repairs to a fire engine and an ambulance, additional streetlights, additional appropriations needed for the concrete street repair that we just talked about in 132, and then the trees as well were added on there for the Memorial Tree Planning Program. Any additional discussion, questions, comments? So again, it was moved by Winkle and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-138 amended. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to amend emergency clause for this reason stated earlier by the Director of Finance, yourself and myself.
Second.
It was moved by Winkle and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to 2025-138 amended for the reasons stated earlier in the meeting. The emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was moved by Winkle and seconded by Awig to adopt 2025-138 amended with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Avens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-138 amended has been adopted.
2025-139.
An ordinance providing the issuance and sale of not-to-exceed $4,250,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide funds to pay cost of acquiring and installing ultrasonic water meter equipment, together with all the necessary appurtenances thereto.
2025-140.
A resolution confirming that the 1% income tax credit will be provided upon the passes of the electors of the .75% income tax increase at the November 4, 2025 election, as set forth in the authorizing resolution number 2025-113 and introduced ordinance number 2025-114.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Move to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Avens to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-140. Are there any comments or questions?
Yes, through the chair.
Mr. Schaefer?
It's my understanding that currently what is on the ballot is strictly a tax increase. Is that correct?
Are you asking the ballot language?
Yes.
Okay, the ballot language asks for the community's vote on the ordinance, and therefore the income tax increase itself.
But not for the credit.
The ordinance, the ordinance itself, you passed a resolution, and you passed, you put an ordinance forward for council to review and vote on after the election, and that ordinance contains both the income tax increase and the credit, and that was done purposefully. So, you know, this resolution itself is really just to confirm what we've already said in both the ordinance and the resolution that has previously been passed. Think, you know, at this point, I know that there's been some questions that have been asked, and I think, you know, your question goes along to this, but, you know, it's, it's kind of interesting that, you know, we're being questioned as what, as to whether we should follow the advice of our outside attorneys. These outside attorneys are part of a global law firm representing hundreds of municipalities, and they've been the author of North Ridgeville financial ordinances that we have, and levies that have gone to the voters for multiple decades, in addition to those hundreds of other communities. So today, you know, we're asking for council to confirm their intentions on what we've already put through, but this is your opportunity to publicly declare whether you, whether you will follow the will of the people. And really, it's just another opportunity to confirm that you will pass 2025-114 that contains both the income tax increase and the increase in the credit, should the people vote for the income tax increase on November 4.
I guess the, the questions I have coming from constituents, and I say that in the mode of do not shoot me, I'm the messenger, is I received several publications in the mail that imply that this credit is on the ballot, and it's my understanding that it is not on the ballot.
The credit itself is not in the ballot language.
That's what I'm trying to establish.
The reference to the credit is on the ballot when it references the ordinance that is being asked for the community to pass.
And this is just a resolution. This is not an ordinance.
Before you write this minute? Yes, it is a resolution.
So that's kind of like a promise.
Yep. Do you keep your promises? That's the question that's being asked tonight.
The question I'm asking you is, do you keep your promises?
I don't have to. Council makes the decision.
Are there any additional comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Swink?
I understand the purpose behind the resolution, I truly do, because of comments that people are, are making. I feel, though, as this perhaps should have been introduced by our president of council, because to me, it seems like, and no offense, but you're telling us that, yes, we have to vote for it. I mean, I, I know I'm voting for the credit, but it's, it's almost like a you need to do this, and, and I think that, you know, being, being elected by our constituents, to me, it's not a good look, but I am for it, and I will likely vote yes for it. But I had conversations with Jason about it, and, you know, he's like, it just appeared on the agenda. Nobody really had a conversation about it, and that also bothered me a little bit, but that's just my take on it.
Any additional comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Winkle?
Be it a Facebook message, a voicemail, having a conversation with me on the street, talking, be I drive past your truck, by your house with my truck, or having a resolution here, if, if the income tax increase passes, I, I can speak for myself and not the rest of council members, 100% plan on passing the 1% credit without question. Thank you.
Are there any additional comments or questions?
I guess I, through the chair, I don't understand why you're telling people, give us your money and we'll give it back to you. I, I just, it sounds really odd, and I'm a skeptic, and so I, I could see you taking my money and not giving it back as a credit.
Well, council is saying that they will, so I don't know why you're looking at me. This is a council vote.
I know, my question is, how do you take money and then give it back, and why are we doing that?
Direct-
The credit, yeah.
Do you want to- Director of Finance, do you want to comment on why it was structured the way that it is?
So the credit isn't taking money back, the credit reduces the tax liability on people who work outside the city. So we're not asking somebody to pay their taxes and we're refunding them, it reduces the rate that they pay. That's the purpose of the credit.
I know that, I'm just, I was wondering, is it actually feasible?
I think most local municipalities do offer a credit.
Absolutely.
As well. Are there any additional comments or questions? All right, so again, it was moved by the mayor and seconded by Abens to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-140. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause, so that way the intentions can be clear before the voters vote on this particular issue.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Abens to add the emergency clause to 2025-140 for the reasons just stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Abens to adopt 2025-140 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries and resolution number 25...2025-140 has been adopted.
Moving on to second readings, we have 2025-127.
An ordinance providing for the amendment of Chapter 1446, Registration of Contractors in the Building and Housing Code.
Under third readings, 2025-104.
An ordinance designating the North Ridgeville Community Improvement Corporation as an agency of the city under Ohio Revised Code Section 1724.10, authorizing the execution of an agreement and plan for industrial, commercial, distribution, research, and development.
I will make a motion at this time to amend 2025-104 by substitution.
Second. Oops, sorry.
With the version that is at our table this evening.
Second.
The motion was made by Jacobs and seconded by Swink to amend Exhibit A, which is the agreement and the plan between the city and the CIC, to add, and I quote, "at least one of whom will be a council member designated by the city council president," end quote, to the end of Section 4D. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I just wanted to clarify that that's adding a person on council to the governing board of the CIC.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no.
No.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
I'm sorry, what are we voting on?
The amendment to...
Just the amendment, not the whole thing?
To amend Exhibit A, correct.
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
No.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries and 2025-104 has been amended.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Swink.
Move to adopt.
Second.
The motion was made by Swink and seconded by Winkle to adopt 2025-104 amended. Are there any comments or questions?
Through the chair.
Mr. Schaefer.
I'm not comfortable with surrendering any autonomy in order to make things move faster. It's always been my opinion that the legislature is to act as a speed bump, to slow things down, to make sure bad decisions are not passed hastily. So I'm against this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Any additional comments or questions? Again, the motion was made by Swink and seconded by Winkle to adopt 2025-104 amended. Clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
No.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
No.
Jacobs?
Yes.
2025-104 amended has been approved by a vote of five to two.
2025-115.
An ordinance amending Chapter 628 Fair Housing of the North Ridgeville General Offenses Code.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Swink.
Move to adopt.
Second.
The motion was made by Swink and seconded by Winkle to adopt 2025-115. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries and 2025-115 has been adopted.
2025-122.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a 12-month contract with renewal options according to law and in a manner prescribed by law with the lowest and best bidder for custodial services.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Swink.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It was moved by Swink and seconded by AWIG to adopt 2025-122. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries and 2025-122 has been adopted.
2025-125.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 2024-91 which established a water meter service charge.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Swink.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It was moved by Swink, seconded by AWIG, to adopt 2025-125. Are there comments or questions?
Mr. President, I just wanted to clarify that this is actually creating a separate account for the water meter, correct?
This is to permit the...the water meter charge to be part of the lien process that is already in place for all the other utilities on your bill.
Okay.
Any additional comments or questions?
Through the chair.
Mr. Schaefer.
Does this allow us to increase this fee at a future date?
It's already set.
Or is it set?
No.
This ordinance does not talk about that at all.
But it doesn't have any kind of latitude like that.
Not this ordinance at all.
Are there additional comments or questions? Again, the motion was made by Swink and seconded by AWIG to adopt 2025-125. Clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries and 2025-125 has been adopted.
2025-126.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Ridgeville to enter into a contract addendum according to law and in a manner prescribed by law with the McBride-Dale Clarion for completion of the zoning code update project.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Swink.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause to this.
Second.
The reason being that there is a pause in the project because of where we're at in the process and the need for additional funds to complete this project because of additional work that was being asked to be considered, and the emergency clause will allow the progress of this project to move forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swink to add the emergency clause to 2025-126 for the reasons just stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. It was moved by Swink and seconded by Winkle to adopt 2025-126 with the emergency clause in place. Are there comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?